Go ahead and call a meeting to order if you would, please stand. I can have Pastor Cliff, the armin, come forward, please.
Let's pray. Father, thank you, Lord, for this day, thank you for your many blessings, thank you for everyone that's gathered here tonight. For ask a special blessing tonight on our city and our government, Father God. We thank you, Lord, for just peace, all those that are going through issues during this economy. Father, we thank you, Lord, for your hand of peace upon them. Pray God's blessing, your blessing, Lord, on all this council and leadership of our city. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Next, if we could have Boy Scout troop 1908 present our colors.
Color guard attention. Audience attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Audience, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the meaning of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Color guard post the colors. Color guard about face. Color guard, return the post.
Please be seated. All right, come back up, guys, I'm gonna introduce all of you. We're in trouble, we're not the audio person. Okay, we have some wee dolos with us this time, so if you all turn back around, this rabid hand is gonna call out your name. Uh, we have Dylan. We have Jordan. We have Donovan. And we have Andrew. And our Boy Scouts, our Gunner. Esteban. Chris. Alex. Joe. And Mario. Can you help me give them a hand? Thank you, and y'all can head back out. We now have the honor of welcoming a member of our military. Steve Oing, if you could come forward, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Steve Oing, and I am a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. A lot of folks do, are not aware of the Military Order of the Purple Heart and its organization. We were chartered back in 1953 by the US Congress to function similarly to other veterans organizations. In other words, we help veterans and their families wherever possible. But one of our other charter items was to recognize first responders who have been injured or wounded in the line of duty. While there is no Purple Heart for them, we do recognize them by giving them a plaque from the Military Order of the Purple Heart and its over 300,000 members. And so, I'd like to read something tonight. It says, "It is an honor and privilege to recognize Sergeant Pete Gonzalez and Corporal Corey Wester and of the Odessa Police Department for the sacrifices they make protecting the citizens of Odessa. Like the soldier, the police officer knows that on a daily basis, he may be asked to make the supreme sacrifice. And on a daily basis, he performs his duty without hesitation. The Military Order of the Purple Heart and I applaud their dedication and sacrifice they make each and every day. The plaque they received tonight is part of the first responders program initiated by the Military Order of the Purple Heart to recognize these sacrifices. It is well deserved. So on behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart and the chapter in Ludwig, the South Plains Chapter 0900, I want to thank you two gentlemen for the sacrifices you make and all of our officers every day." So, I could have Sergeant Pedro Gonzalez come forward. This plaque reads, "The Military Order of the Purple Heart, First Responder Citation Awarded to Sergeant Pedro L. Gonzalez, Odessa, Texas Police Department, in recognition for resolute action and wounds received in the performance of duties on 23 December 2015. Presented by Chapter 0900, Ludwig, Texas Military Order of the Purple Heart, USA." Corporal Corey Wester. Citation on the plaque reads, "The Military Order of the Purple Heart, First Responder Citation awarded to Corporal Corey D. Wester, Odessa, Texas Police Department, in recognition for resolute action and wounds received in the performance of duties on 23 December 2015. Presented by Chapter 0900, Ludwig, Texas Military Order of the Purple Heart, USA."
Can we give these gentlemen one more round of applause, please? Okay, next we'll move to the consent agenda, and I believe E needs to be pulled off.
Make a motion, we move E from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, minus E. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the rest of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have item E of the consent agenda. Consider appropriation funds for development and construction of downtown hotel and convention center. Mr. Morton.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask Michael to come up and put the conceptual design on the screen so the audience can see it. This item before you asks council to appropriate the funds to build the public side of this project. The public side being the plaza, the parking garage, renovation of the Ector Theater, and the building of the conference center. This is a long anticipated private-public partnership that will invest close to 77 million in downtown Odessa. I'm proud to tell you that we'll be able to do this without zero impact on the property tax rate or the taxpayers. We will be able to do this without issuing any public debt. The funds for the public side of this project are in the bank today and are ready to start building this project. The private local participation, just so you know, is estimated at about 47 million to build 150 square foot full-service headquartered hotel with 200-plus rooms. We're excited and chasing local ownership with local control. Again, the public side is, let me tell you where the up to $30 million is coming from for the public side. That $30 million will build 78,000 square foot state-of-the-art conference center and renovated Ector Theater, open-air plaza, and 300-car parking garage. The public dollars are broken down as follows. 16.6 million from hotel occupancy tax revenue, which is generated by visitors to our city who stay in our hotels and by which, and by state law, may only be, and this money may only be spent on certain projects, such as a conference center or other activities that bring people to our community. I can't, we cannot take this 16 million dollars and build parks with it or build roads with it, but what we can do with it, and what you guys have directed staff over time and set this aside for, is to build this conference center. There's also about $8 million from the Odessa Development Corporation that will build the parking garage and that would provide work on infrastructure around the hotel on the streets. And again, those are dollars that may only be spent on economic development projects such as this. Finally, there is $6 million that we've set aside over time from Excel's sales tax over budget. And so we are ready to go. Other benefits of this project include the possibility that we will gain at least 10 years of state hotel tax, sales tax revenue and hotel tax revenue for this project that we wouldn't have otherwise gained. Property tax will be generated by the private side of this project, estimated at $47 million. And this project, we hope, will serve as a catalyst project for revitalizing downtown and other private capital investment in downtown. This project will also help preserve not only downtown property values, but property in the residential areas around downtown as we improve the value of downtown. And finally, a down economic time is actually a great time to reinvest in the community, take advantage of possible lower construction costs, and provide much-needed construction jobs and provide hope to the community that the council is looking forward to the future of Odessa. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, do we have a motion?
Still no.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to bid awards. Consider a bid award for the improvements at Salinas Park, Mr. Patton. Put the microphone down, Mr. Patton.
Good evening, the Salinas bid for Salinas Park, we have some, all right. The agenda itself, Salinas Park is under rehabilitation project and it's in accordance with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Master Plan has grouped this and has got it in the next project priority, and we have funds allocated to do so. We had bids from, opened on December 22nd of 2015, we had three responsive bidders, and the bids themselves also contain some alternates. We did not award those alternates except for one, and that was the playground itself. And with that, we have a, the low bid ended up with Onyx Contractors in the amount of $1,138,720. The three bids that we received were from Campbell Construction, Onyx Contractors, and JFA Construction. And like I said, we did not have the funding or did not choose, to choose all the items, only one, that was the playground along with the base bid, and that did result with the lowest bid being Onyx Contractors for that much. We do have the funding in place to make that happen now, and I've got Representative Parkes Smith and Cooper here, Tom Cisco, they did the plans and specifications. He's here to also answer any questions about the designs and the bid. And since we do have the funds, we make a recommendation that we do award this to Onyx Contractors. And I do wanna note that they have Woodson under construction, and they're also doing our Comanche Trails Soplex East under construction. One of my concerns was getting another project, can you make sure that you meet all the timeframes that we've instructed that you're gonna be under? And they had full commitment that they will be able to do so.
Especially Woodson, virginity.
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any questions for Steve? Okay, do we have a motion?
Still no.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we go to public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Kimberly Berry, known as Teyah shooting sports owner to rezone from Central Business District 2 to planned development. Mr. Bradley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The City Melody 14 notices related to this case, we did not have any notices returned, we did not receive any written protests, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in the request is located in the northwest corner of intersection of East 8th Street and North Tom Green. Site is currently zoned Central Business District 2, and it is occupied by retail use development. It is Teyah Shooting Sports. Land use in this area does consist of office and retail development, there's also commercial development and vacant land. The applicant and the owner of the property in this case is Kimberly Berry, and she is requesting a zone change from Central Business District 2 to Planned Development Central Business District 2, and this would facilitate the development of an indoor firearms range as an accessory use to the existing retail sales that are occurring on the property at this time. The requested zoning of this property is not contrary to the land use plan of the city of Odessa and the existing and proposed uses of this, in this area, and this proposed rezoning will not alter the core zoning of the property involved. The Planning and Zoning Commission did get unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. And be happy to answer any questions. And for the specific use permit, I might add to the council that the property owner is here and is prepared to address the questions that were brought up in front of council.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for any comments on this specific agenda. Come on up, Ms. Berry.
Good evening, I'm Kim Berry, I'm the owner of Teyah Shooting Sports, and I would love to answer any questions you may have regarding the project proposed. I have also invited Aaron Ludwig, who builds indoor ranges on a regular basis. He is with Action Target. In fact, he has worked with OPD and MPD both at their facilities. So he's here to answer any technical questions as well.
Okay, can you address just a little bit, there was concern with moving forward towards downtown as far as the aesthetics and the outside, what it's gonna look like? Can you kind of just educate us a little bit on that?
Sure, absolutely. Currently, the existing structure, we have about 5,000 square feet, 2,500 up front that's masonry, and the other 2,500 in the back that is a metal building. We'll be demoing the metal building, and that will be masonry as well. So we'll have a consistent, consistency as far as the aesthetic. So everything will be CMU, it will be painted, and of course, to match. We also talked with planning and zoning about maybe if we can get approval in the right way to doing some xeriscaping. And we've also started talking to some of the local colleges and high schools, their art departments, about doing some type of wildlife mural on one side of the building. So as far as the aesthetics, I think it's definitely gonna be an improvement.
Okay.
Good. I appreciate that, I was concerned about that because it was a metal building. And first of all, I wanna say thank you so much for doing this. This will give us a draw for downtown. You'll only be, what, two blocks away from the convention center? And I think it's great that you're choosing to do that downtown. And I do appreciate the fact that you're wanting to really drive civilians up, and I like the idea with the art on the side, so thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Look for approval.
Okay. This time, we might go ahead and have seat. Since we've had no other public comment, we will close the public hearing. We do have a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open the public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Kimberly Berry, Teyah Shooting Sports owner, for a specific use permit to allow an indoor firearm range. Mr. Bradley.
Yes, sir, this is the exact same piece of property that's addressed in the previous case, and there has been a site plan that was presented. I will get there eventually. That does indicate the location of the existing structure, it's a little over 5,000 square feet. The parking in the property is adequate and does meet ordinance requirements for both the proposed uses. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with adoption of the following conditions. That the construction and operating standards that are required to protect and assure the safety of the operator, the patrons, and occupants of nearby properties be incorporated into the designs of the firearm range. That any proposed signs for this development will meet ordinance requirements. Also, adoption of this site plan and the review process that has been addressed by, to the council related to violation of terms and conditions of the specific use permit after a public hearing. And the staff does concur with the planning commission's recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Randy? Okay, this isn't a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and come forward.
Wait, hold on, the newspaper's here, so I suspect there are going to be people that are gonna be questioning, what about the, the safety of the people around there? So if you have your person here, maybe they can address that, and it would alleviate maybe some fears.
Absolutely. Aaron Ludwig with Action Target, and flew in from Utah today to represent Kim and her project. We have the largest manufacturer of shooting range equipment in the world. I have over 100 shooting ranges in the state of Texas alone, including here in Odessa. And I did build one recently here just outside of U.C. as well. We are in the business of keeping bullets inside the building. And the products that they have selected are more than, more than adequate. We surpass any codes or expectations out there to contain everything fired inside of that range. Specifically, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those, but I can guarantee that it will be safe and it will be ballistic.
What about noise?
Yes, excellent question. So the building itself will be constructed of solid concrete, and it will have an insulated deck on top, and I will have sound-abating material on the inside. You will be able to hear light noise on the outside, you'll be able to know that there's shooting taking place inside, but it will be significantly quieter than the cars driving by on the street outside.
Mark, are you having to build a whole new building instead of just, I guess, doing the changes through the inside of where it's already existing?
Uh, and that is due to the fact that the existing building is a very flimsy, if you will, in regard to shooting range, but it's just a metal building. This will be rebuilt as a solid concrete building, and those concrete walls will actually serve a ballistic nature to make sure no rounds can come out the sides of this range. So it'll be built specifically for this purpose, it'll be much safer for you.
How many people are gonna fit in there?
It's seven lanes at one time.
Great. Mike, do you have a question?
One more to you.
Okay.
I have another question. I've spent an awful lot of time in my past in indoor shooting facilities, and I'm just curious, will this only be for handguns or what?
My products will be able to contain either, and it will be up to my clients to decide which ones they allow. But I certainly have the ability to build this to contain any type of rifle that you'd like to use.
Can you briefly, can you briefly describe what else, other than the concrete you're using for, to stop the bullets?
Sure, so the concrete itself is never intended to be shot, it is strictly there as a safety net. So I will, they will give me a concrete shell, and I will retrofit everything in there needed to turn it into a shooting range. Specifically, I'll have a bullet trap in the back. It's composed of a granulated rubber material that contains all of the rounds that are fired into it. Overhead, I'll have armored steel baffles that come back, so that from the shooter's position, you see a solid ceiling all the way downrange that will contain any rounds that are misfired high. And then in between each shooter, I have a ballistic divider so that no one can accidentally shoot the guy next to them. And also so that I don't have to see what the guy next to me is doing with that firearm, everybody's protected and aimed downrange. In the end, as you stand in that shooting booth, everything that you can see and/or shoot downrange will contain a bullet.
Call for a question. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. We will close the public hearing at this time. Do we have a motion?
Still no.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to ordinance. Remove from the table and consider the approval of the request by 87th Street Partners. Uh, we need a motion to remove it from the table.
Make a motion, we remove it from the table.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will consider 87th Street Partners, Mr. Bradley.
Yes, sir. Uh, the property involved in this request is located northeast of intersection of East 87th Street and Yale Avenue. The site is currently designated future development, and it's also zoned Special Dwelling District, Drill Reservation, and also Special Dwelling District. This whole property is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of single-family residential development, vacant land, and there are some retail uses adjacent to 87th Street. Uh, the applicant in this case is 87th Street Partners, they do own this property. And the purpose of these various zoning requests would facilitate the development of a proposed new single-family homes and also a possible multi-family residential area. There will also be retail uses and also a drill site, and also substantial surface drainage basin in this area. Documentation related to the rezoning of the existing drill reservation has been submitted to the planning department. Uh, the proposed original and rezoning requests are not contrary to the land use plan of the city's comprehensive plan, and these requests are not out of scale with the needs of the area and the city's intent to place retail development adjacent to a major collector's street, and in this case, it would be 87th Street. Uh, there is multi-family proposed, it would be a development buffer between the proposed single-family and the proposed retail. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with the condition that site plan approval would be required prior to any single-family residential development. And the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. And I'd like to add also that any multi-family development in this area by ordinance is required to have site plan approval. So that will be addressed if that does come to pass.
Okay, are there any questions for Randy?
Is a developer here?
Uh, the developer's representative is here, yes, ma'am.
Could we speak with him, please?
Hello, Andrew Hobie with Maverick Engineering at 1909 West Wall Street, Little, Texas.
Could you kinda tell us exactly where this will be? Because I, I know that Mr. Gardner's received a lot of questions, and I know I've received a lot of questions. So first of all, could you tell us exactly where this is?
Okay, it is on the north side of 87th Street, immediately to the east of the existing Beaton Bow developments going on up there. I think the newest Beaton Bow neighborhood is due north of that. It is about, was it about a mile west of the new elementary school on 87th Street?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so this is part of the Beaton Bow development?
Uh, it's not part of Beaton Bow company, but eventually, it'll be Beaton Bow developing single-family homes on the site.
Okay. Are those squares, the lines, are those drill sites?
Yes, they're existing drill sites.
What plans do you have that after they do convert to drill sites, to, I guess, what do you call it? Mask 'em or dress 'em up or IDI? do you call it, mask them or dress them up, or do you all have any other?
At the moment, we haven't got any plans for how that's going to be addressed. I'm sure when they come in to actually develop the single-family, that should be included in that site plan, some plan to buffer the drill sites from the houses.
And that will also be addressed through the city ordinance related to oil and gas drilling within the city of Odessa. And so it will be sort of a two-pronged approach, through site plan approval and also through the existing ordinance.
Right now, we, they haven't got any plans to actually build out the housing on the site, so when they actually come to do that, they'll be presenting a new site plan, showing where the roads and alleys and lots are all going to be.
Is it, the way I'm looking at it, it's a zone right now, right? Or no?
It is, that, the large green area up in the northeast or northwest corner of this is all in a playa lake, and so right now, we're going to be dedicating it either as a drainage basin for, to the city, or potentially as a city park, because it's not really developable as it is right now.
How big area is that, the drainage area?
The drainage area is about 34, 35 acres, I believe, isn't that right? About 34, 35 acres.
Holds a lot of water.
Yeah, 34.5. It's a, it's a really big playa lake up there, collecting through this whole area.
Fairly deep, two miles.
Yeah.
It's swimming pool.
Yeah. It's designed to be a regional drainage detention basin.
You mentioned about dedicating the park and the drainage ditch to the city. We have our parks director here, would you mind coming up, Steve, and?
I don't want us to get into a situation where we lose stuff, so let's start at the very beginning and educate everybody.
If they truly want to make a park out of that, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, sorry.
Where's that microphone? You can sing and dance now. We have had some, some discussions about that, and in the meantime, I've also had further discussions with the Beaton Bowe group. They're looking at this as a possible park site in the future, but they're also looking at their own plan, and they've not approached me, but they do have Alaska Park设计 firm out of Lubbock that's looking at, doing a sketch of how the land use can accommodate the drainage requirements that we would have in the future, and how it could be accommodated as a park. So my last conversation with the Beaton Bowe group was that they not only would supply the plan, but they're also looking at development funds to make that happen, and then they would consider that as a donation to the city as a park site. And that was my last conversation with them. So we are gonna, if they do want to make a contribution to the Odessa Parks Foundation, the Odessa Parks Foundation will have some criteria in place to accept those different types of donations and such as this. The criteria to include recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to review the proposal beforehand, make sure that it is in compliance with our master plan, then make the recommendation that the foundation accept that property under certain criteria. And I've got extensive letter with quite, quite a few questions that they answered, but very much concerned about the condition of the property, if there's any spills, we have a lot of right-of-way, it's taken up with utilities, there's also high-pressure gas lines that goes across the property. So carving out usable space for a park site, whether that's passive recreation or active recreation, is something I'd like to see addressed in the plan that they proposed to me. So at this point, it's a drainage, it's not a park, not dedicated as a park, and not looking to be so until I see those set of plans.
Correct.
Nor is it an obligation, that's correct.
Sir?
Nor is it an obligation that there is to have a park there.
That's correct, it is definitely their option.
Okay, any more questions?
The reason I brought that up is, we have a lot of drainage ditches that have been given to the city, and some of them we can use, others will never be able to use. Who wants to play baseball like that? So I appreciate Steve, thank you for helping us out there. And I'm thrilled that you do want to put in parks, because I think you'll find that people really want to live where there's a park. Doesn't matter the age, the young children can play there, the older adults can walk and sit out and soak up some of that green and some of this sun. So thank you for including that.
Do we have a motion?
No.
Thank you. Second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Next to the resolution, consider an industrial district agreement, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a four-year triact located approximately at 87th and West County Road. Putting in this agreement will allow for the extension of utilities at the expense of the property owner. They've agreed to the annexation of the property by the end of the term, which is 2019. We put that date because there's some other areas around there that we're looking at annexing at that time, and it's only if the city so requests it. They've also agreed to make payments and a little annexation, and all of the requirements of the standard agreement have been met, and stands ready for adoption by the staff.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Long? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider an ODC Economic Downtown Infrastructure Improvement Plan, Mr. Rennes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution is in connection with the effort to revitalize downtown Odessa. This resolution will allow the Odessa Development Corporation to provide an incentive for downtown business owners to bring their infrastructure up to code and further develop their properties. It will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, starting with our office and moving forward all the way through council for adoption.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and also give you number eight on here. This is, this item is to consider the Odessa Development Corporation to authorize an incentive. It's up to, it's $20,000, up to 80% for a facade improvement, an additional $10,000 for corner lots in downtown. This incentive is to help provide support and assistance to our business owners to bring their facade up to code according to design standards that will be laid out and designed with an overlay zone by Gateway Planning, our consultant, and we hope to have those design standards come June, July.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, consider an economic development agreement with the Odessa Development Corporation for the infrastructure, Mr. Morton.
I'd like Lori to do this one, too. Earlier, council appropriated funds, some of those funds were ODC dollars. Before those dollars can be spent, we, an economic development agreement has to be had with Odessa Development Corporation. We have to have ODC's approval as well as council's approval.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
Motion, do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, appointment of awards, Ms. Cromwell.
For the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District Board, reappoint Chris Flottis, Thomas Blackstone, and Amanda Rogicus.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We do have one citizen that'd like to speak, Margie Frazier. Ms. Frazier, the council can't?
Oh, no.
Answering, okay, just wanted to let you know.
These are just some sheets on what I'm going to just say, because I get up at 4:00 a.m. I'm Margie Frazier, I live in Odessa, I, do I need to get my address and all that, or what?
I've got your address.
Okay. Mostly, it's about the streets. Since I drive a handicap Lyft Husky CISD, I drive all four corners, I go from the north side to the far south side, to the far east side, to the far west side, I've driven them all. Okay, and the streets to me, they've gotten worse and worse, of course, we've had a lot of, a lot of traffic, but I'd like to know when the disrepair is going to be taken care of. Too many areas, I feel like I'm riding over railroad tracks in my bus, and I have a two-year-old bus, pretty, pretty nice bus. Getting off the interstate at Grandview to access East Side Service Road, it's cobblestones and warped area everywhere, it's like driving over an old washboard. Then I, then as I go down Grandview north, I encounter, all the way down there, it's needing repair till you get to A Street, make the ride, head out to LBJ, I go right, by the fundome, and at that four-way stop, I sure wish they'd light up those stop signs because they're all pretty dark. And also, in that area, all of it's got a lot of ripples, a lot of ripples. Going down to LBJ, LBJ itself, I really, I don't know who puts in the school zone signs, but if they move them a block each side, it would help because that street has lots of curves, and when you're in cars and buses and they just barely get to that 25 mile an hour sign and they're at the school, you got a lot of people that drive crazy. Okay, then I come back, that same way, and let's see, I wrote down, going back on Pool Road, that's that access road right by the interstate, and I want to know, we all have that nice Christmas display out there, you've got the two lanes, and we had a lot of rear indexes, and I know, I went over there that night, and it was horrible. And there's no room, there's people trying to turn on Grant, there's people trying to turn on Grant, there's no center, on crane, there's no center lane, there's nothing. We need to improve that area. It's a nice park, McKinney Park is a nice park. So that's an improvement I see that really is needed. And I said that the Grant on the south side is a shame for visiting, visitors exiting there. In fact, all of that area is a shame, we want tourists, we want new business, you want your hotel and stuff, compensator to be accessed, who wants to come over washboards and lots of messy streets, and I mean, they're bad. We come off that interstate at Grandview, Grant, and West Canyon, those are the main roads. Dixie's a smaller road, but they're all in lack of repair, every single one of them. And we got West Canyon Road, we got the big truck stops there now, both of them, the Stripes and the Loves. You get backed up, I've been backed up there two or three stoplights at times, that's pretty bad, because you can't make a right, the trucks can't make a right, they can't make it, they can't get in there. There's two lanes for each side, there's nothing. When is it going to be cleaned up?
Three minutes or so.
I know, there's more you can say, there's university, I know university is going to be done, that's the good part. Hopefully, we get a center lane all the way down where we need it. If you get three extra lanes on each side, that's good, but I know there's people living in those houses. And that's, that's basically most of what I said, I wrote some papers, made copies you can read. But that's my biggest concern, because I am so tired, I'm driving six hours or more a day, and I'm sure a lot of other people, too.
Okay. I had Mr. Morton call you, he can give you specifics on some of them. Is this a good number?
Yes, well, that's my house number. He can leave a message if I'm not there, because he can't call me while I'm driving the bus.
Thank you for providing the writing.
You're welcome.
Thanks for standing up late, I guess, this is late for you.
Kind of past 8 o'clock, it's late, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the last agenda, and we are adjourned.